Good afternoon. My name is Lacey Wilson. I'm here for the She Can We Can Project here at UNCG, honored to interview Commissioner Carolyn Coleman today on Wednesday, the 12th, 2022. Thank you again for your participation in the project.
Thank you for inviting me.
I'm glad to have you. So I think when we, as we get started, how would you describe your beginning journey into politics?
Actually, it started when I was maybe nine or 10 years old.
Really?
My mother was an activist. We lived in Savannah, Georgia, on an unpaved street. And when it rained, the water would come up to the side of the street. And of course, cars would have to go almost into a person's yard to avoid the water.
Sure.
And when it was dark, it was really dark. No streetlights, anything of that nature. So once a year, and she and some of the neighbors would just go door to door and get a petition sign to try to get the streets paved and try to get the water abated there. And of course, nothing happened. And of course, I said, well, something must happen that's different from year to year. But it just didn't happen.
Right.
And so it was after I'd gone to college, in fact, that we managed to get something involved in that community working for us. And so that was really my first engagement with politics because we didn't have any black politicians then. Adam Clayton Powell was it.
Right.
And so I just would go with my mother from door to door. And I heard her talking to the people about the importance of doing something to enhance our community. And so that was really my involvement initially in politics. Of course, I wasn't running for office then. But I did run for some school positions and was elected. And so I guess that was the beginning.
That sounds like the beginning to me. What do you remember? Was it school president? What position did you win?
Student council.
Student council.
Yes.
What do you remember about being a part of the student council?
Well, people always expected you to do more than you were able to do, first of all.
Sure.
And you learn how to run a campaign. I mean, of course, it's a different level
Right.
from where we are now. But you just learn that you could make a difference. And I became one of the students that, at that time, they were not requiring teachers to pass the National Teachers Exam. And so I was one of the students that the teachers chose to help do research to help them prepare for that.
Oh, wow.
So I had an experience of working with adults much earlier than most children my age.
Absolutely. And your activism, it started with your mom taking you, helping with these adult problems as well.
That's it.
Yeah. And none of those petitions went anywhere to what you remember, not until you had graduated?
Well, we'd take them to the city council, county commission. But they didn't make a difference. I guess, actually, it was when I graduated from college and went to Memphis, Tennessee, to work. And A.W. Willis was the first black person that I knew to run for political office. So I worked in his campaign. So I mean, we've come so far when I think about all that I've been able to do in terms of my political experience there. But he lost the election. But that was the beginning of true activism and black people being able to see that we could make a difference in the community.
Absolutely. What do you remember about that first campaign and working on it?
Well, again, I was in over my head all the time because I was able to work with adults too. Even in Savannah, as a teenager and a student in college, I was able to work in a campaign. So this was a time when you learned that if you want to make a difference, you have to start somewhere. And of course, I started working in A.W. Willis's campaign. And I remember that night when he lost. I really thought he could win. I mean, you're naive.
Sure.
And you think, oh, gosh, this is just so exciting. And we gathered at his campaign headquarters on that night. And when he lost, he shed a tear. And I knew then, this is for real. First of all, he was a man that is crying. And then, secondly, almost everyone else in the room was crying.
Yeah.
Because I think we all expected more.
Yeah.
I mean, whites just didn't vote for black people. And many of the blacks were not registered to vote, didn't see the importance of it, didn't know the difference that it could make. So it was just, as I think back on it, it probably gave me the fuel to keep going throughout my life as I've worked in this area. Because once you see the, once you think about, really, the history that your people have gone through to get to that point, I've not seen a man cry in a campaign since then. So I knew that it made a difference.
Absolutely. And you continued your activism, would you say, since the beginning of just your mom helping you with the petition?
I did. 1960, I was a student in high school. And our history teacher invited the NAACP vice president to speak to our class. And he came, Curtis Cooper was his name. He came and spoke to us and told us that the NAACP Youth Council was preparing to sit in. Well, some of us had heard of the sit-in demonstrations here in Greensboro. And he invited us to come to one of the meetings. So we went to the meeting and, gosh, I mean, that was like the world had opened.
Wow.
You know, we had that connection then with the Greensboro Four. And we had the thought that even in Savannah, we could do something. So we planned and prepared for that, learned a bit about nonviolent activities and just everything that we could about the movement and the kinds of things we needed to do in order to be successful. And so I joined the group. And on the 16th of March, 1960, we had our first sit-in demonstration.
Where did you sit in?
Well, I was at, well, let me go back and talk a bit about this.
Okay.
We divided into groups of fours. I was in the group that went to Levy's Department Store. And of course, they went to McCrory's, Crest, Silver's, just about any department store, which they don't exist now.
Right.
It's a smaller Walmart, that's what they were.
Sure.
So when we walked from, we gathered at a church, had prayer and just had the words of encouragement coming from some of the other students and adults. We had a youth council advisor who worked with us. We walked from that church, First African Baptist Church, down to Levy's. When we were, not to tell anyone what we were doing, but that day, somehow, the principal found out. And he met with us and told us that we were foolish for doing something like that. He said, first of all, you're never going to get into college. Secondly, I mean, just discouraging you.
Right.
Secondly, you will be known around this country as a troublemaker, and you won't find a job. Well, he didn't know who he was talking to.
He did not.
There were students in that group who were Levy's in their class.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, this just really made us angry and more determined to do what we were going to do. So we walked from that church down to Levy's. And when we arrived at Levy's, there were white people all around the front door. So someone had told someone
Sure.
what was going to happen. We walked on in, the doors were open. They just stood there holding the doors, walked on in, went directly to the lunch counter. And we were told by the waitress, if you sit here, we're going to have to have you arrested. We can't serve you, so you might as well get up and leave. And at some point, we looked at the menu. And the police came and told us we had to leave. And of course, we wouldn't leave, so they arrested us. So from that point on, in Savannah, I mean, we celebrated every Sunday, continued to sit in. And the very first Sunday when we had a public mass meeting, and back at that time, they didn't have like a Visa or MasterCard. Each store had its own card, so, credit card. And so when we told them what had happened, people started throwing credit cards from Levy's and other stores on the floor.
Oh, wow.
This church had a balcony, and they just threw the cards over the balcony. They were so angry that they knew that they had to do something. And so for 18 months, every Sunday, we had a public mass meeting at 4:00, just moving from church to church around the city. We were successful. We were the first, I believe it is, the first city where we were able to be successful with a boycott in Savannah, in Georgia, but of course, in Savannah.
Yeah, which is incredibly impressive to really think about, especially with, at that time, so many were going with far more violent means and had more violent reactions to these protests. When you think back on this protest and the community support that you did get, what stands out to you?
Just the fact that people stood together. No one had to tell you the purpose. You knew why you were there. And every day, another group of students joined us. And so, you know, people just were wonderful. I mean, students were, but I'll tell you this. The, when we returned to school after having been arrested, there were students who thought we were crazy too.
Sure.
Why would they do something like that? I mean, if you don't have something within you that gives you that incentive to do more, you just accept life as it is. And that's why it's so important now that people get up from there and do something about what's going on in this country. They need to do it.
And so when you're thinking about, when you're thinking back on your activism roots and the activism you participated in, at that point, did you ever think you would run for political office?
No. And I'll just tell you that there were no role models. So, I mean, while you knew about Adam Clayton Powell, you didn't think, oh, gosh, I could do something like that. And Shirley Chisholm, none of those others had come along at that time. So, I mean, you didn't see black people in positions like this. And that doesn't mean that people didn't dream about it. But gosh, to think of yourself being another Adam Clayton Powell, that's almost impossible.
Yeah. It's kind of an insurmountable pedestal to be on.
Exactly, exactly.
So what other, and then it was, you did that in Savannah, and then you went to Memphis for this first campaign?
Oh, no. Wasn't that easy?
It never is.
Never. I, when I graduated from college.
Savannah State?
Yes. The NAACP had been banned in Alabama. And that's another whole story there. But it had been banned in Alabama. And my girlfriend, Edna Jackson, told me that the NAACP was looking for some students to go back into Alabama and register people to vote, organize youth units and that kind of thing. The Supreme Court had ruled that the governor could not ban us. And so that's how we were able to go back in to Alabama. Got to Alabama, and of course, black people were, having just dealt with Bull Connor and Martin Luther King marching in Birmingham and whatever. So it wasn't a campaign around politics as much as just another set of demonstrations that we were doing. We were there just after the Selma march, Selma to Montgomery. And so the precepts were basically the same. You organizing for a sit-in demonstration to register people to vote in a community are just simply organizing as sit-in demonstrators. So they were all very, very closely related. And that's, if you really want good political organizing, become a community organizer. That's the way I did it and several others. In fact, as I look back on this, many of the people who now serve in political office served as a community organizer first. My girlfriend, Edna, that I talked about earlier, was just elected to the General Assembly, or the Board of Delegates, they're called, in legislative board, they're called, in Georgia, having served as mayor of Savannah just six years ago. So that was the basis of her learning that skill too.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's so much to be learned about community organizing that can then take a next step to actually being in political office. As well as the importance, not to over, the importance of registering people to vote is such an undertold power that we often think about.
Yes.
Yeah. When you're, even when you're campaigning now or when you've campaigned in the past, do you sometimes find that people are not excited for particular elections? And then does that make you think back on what it costs so many of us to vote?
Yes. You know, the thing is, people do get tired. And what we're going through right now with trying to get voting rights extended, we went through that in the 60s. And so you soon learn that maybe you get tired, you get a little weary, but you have to pick up and go. And for me, I knew so many of those people, you know. I didn't know Mekka Evers, but I know Merrily Evers, Fannie Lou Hamer, Aaron Henry, just people like that. Charles, Charles Evers, Merrily, well, I said Merrily Evers. But anyway, people of that caliber that have done that very same thing, have gone through all of the suffering and whatever. And you start thinking, well, my goodness, this is such a small contribution that I'm making. I need to do more. I can't sit here and not do more. And so I think all of that sort of keeps you moving forward.
It's all fuel.
Because it's easy to go backwards. Easy.
It's all fuel for the next steps.
Yes, yes.
What do you remember about registering people to vote in Alabama?
Well, as I said, we were there just after that Selma, well, during the Selma to Montgomery march. Just so many people died. Jimmy Jackson was killed right out of Anniston, Alabama. Ms. Boynton, just, oh, oh, Martin Luther King Jr. had come through there and, you know, was working in Birmingham. So you have to remember all of their contributions. But more than that, you have to remember that things did change. Things are still changing. So for me, that was the incentive.
And then what was the next step out of Alabama? Did you go back to school? Were you still in school at this time?
No, no. I left Alabama and went to Mississippi. And again, that was a little bit different because there we were registering people to vote after Andrew Goodman, Cheney, and Swirner had been killed in Mississippi.
Right.
So you can't help but think, gosh, it could happen to me.
Right.
But it didn't. And so we worked on some, the main streets for black people shopping and whatever, just walking up to people, asking them, are you registered to vote? And if they said no, believe it or not, we had to transport them downtown to the Board of Elections. And, you know, all the silly questions that they were asked, how many bubbles in a bar of soap? And how fast can a man run if he's walking two miles in an hour? That kind of thing. So just the fact that it was so difficult, and of course, having come along after Vernon Damer had been killed in his house in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, all of that stuff, just, it just worked on you. You know, sometimes you didn't want to sleep because you wanted to get up and just keep going. And I guess that gave us that energy too, to go on.
You really need it in like spaces like that.
Yes.
So much of the community resists
Exactly.
the change you're trying to do.
Exactly.
But it's such a needed change.
And our people don't realize now, you can just take a form and give it to the average person in the average city. They can complete that form, give it back to you, and you take it to the Board of Elections, and they're registered to vote.
That's it.
Didn't have to transport you or anything of that nature.
No weird questions about bubbles or coal.
Oh, gosh, no.
Mm-mm. It's just a great result of the activism that you were a part of, truly.
And you had some victories.
Yeah.
You know, we had some victories.
And we have to hold on to those.
Oh, gosh, well, that's the problem.
It absolutely is.
Yes, that's the problem.
So what happened after Mississippi?
Okay, well, I worked throughout Mississippi.
Okay.
And that was registering people to vote, just canvassing, trying to get them organized into NAACP units. And after Mississippi, I went to Memphis, Tennessee. Well, that was another situation where the organizers themselves were the sanitation workers who were discouraged because one of them had been killed on a truck, one of the garbage trucks at a time when it was raining and that, the part of the truck that scoops trash up pulled one man up when he was sitting on the back of the truck. And of course, they killed him.
Yeah.
He had no insurance. And I can remember now seeing the men walking with placards in front of themselves with the chains around their necks, a string around their neck, said, I am a man. Because this man died, and he had no benefits from the city
Right.
to bury himself, well, for his family to bury him with.
Yeah.
So, you know, I worked there. And we started demonstrating with these gentlemen to help them obtain their rights. And of course, things were not quite moving as quickly as we thought they should. That's when we called in Martin Luther King. And I'm saying we, I was a student.
Right.
Formerly a student. But these were adults that we met with every night then, talking about what needed to be done. And they decided to call in Martin Luther King, who incidentally was supposed to be in Greensboro, North Carolina, at the time that he came to Memphis.
Right.
So there is a connection between the two there.
Yeah.
But we demonstrated, and this was where A.W. Willis was, to Memphis. We demonstrated there. I organized youth units there and a college chapter. So we had young people involved as well as adults. The interesting thing about Memphis was that in Memphis, there were a number of Republicans who were African-American. That's because of Arkansas, which had a number of the Rockefellers there. And they, I guess, were able to get people in that area, black and white, to organize as Republicans. So that was a little bit different for us to see that there were black Republicans, and they seemed to fare well, a little bit better than here. But that was when many of the people who now Democratic were Republicans.
It was.
And Republicans were Democrats.
It was before that party switch.
Yes.
Interesting.
So then I worked all over Mississippi and did a number of things from organizing to just teaching young people about the movement and that kind of thing. Left there and went to Memphis. All of this is working for the NAACP still. When I arrived in Memphis, I was involved in a number of things, including the fact that James Meredith was on his march from Memphis to Ole Miss, where he was going to attend school.
Trying to register.
Yeah. So we were in that demonstration. We were just involved in a number of things. And when we started working with the sanitation workers, Martin Luther King came in and things just made a tremendous burst of excitement in the community. So we marched with King. And it was a situation where we had young people who didn't understand that you couldn't win with bricks and guns and things of that nature. So in one of the marches, they started throwing rocks in the windows of the stores, that were department stores downtown. And that was, that first march that we attempted, we had to end because they were so violent. And so, you know, the story with Dr. King then.
Yeah.
I know that perhaps that was the time when I really became angry. Now, throughout all of this, you know, I really didn't become angry. But when a man is killed because he's just simply fighting for his rights, you know that something more has to be done. And of course, we did demonstrate and everything. And finally, we're able, years, some years later, to get our first black mayor. So I had left Memphis at that time. And I'm sure A.W. Willis was one happy man to see an African-American involved there.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But we had several African-Americans who became county commissioners. Vasco Smith became one, Jesse Turner Sr. became one. And that was a proud thing for us because, as I said, we had not seen a black who was elected to office. I did have the opportunity to work with Fannie Lou Hamer and some of the others who worked out of Mississippi and in Tennessee. And of course, we had several victories. I want to tell you a little story about Mekka Evers. I was not there when he was killed. I was still in college. Merrily Evers tells a story of having been in her living room, or kitchen, I believe it was, waiting on him to come home from a demonstration where he was registering people to vote. And the kids were in there playing. And she heard the car when it drove up. And so she said, well, we'll wait on him to get out and everything. And he had things to bring him out. So he was getting things out of the car when someone shot him, killed him. And she said that she, following, you know, following his death, ran out, she didn't know what to say in with the kids and protect them. She knew something had happened that was not good, or whether she should go to him. And of course, she ran to him. And he was dead when she arrived. She says that she scrubbed the sidewalk that he died on up until her last days in, living in Mississippi. She never could get his blood out of that sidewalk. Just to see that happen. Every day you Every day you walk out of the house.
Yeah.
You have to look at his blood that's embedded in the, in the sidewalk. And of course, it, it, it had to take a toll on her.
For sure.
So for us who supported her and, and her kids. It, it was, it was a devastating blow. Although I was there not when he was killed, but afterwards. Because you couldn't pass the house without thinking of Merga Evans and Marily. And, and now I think we don't, we don't treasure the people and the sacrifices that they made for us to get where we are. You know, it's, 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 it's a situation where you have some NAACP members, um, but not enough. You have some folk who work with Action Network, but not enough. I mean, they're contented now just to sit at home and do nothing. And my, my family teases me because they said, "I can be as sick as I don't know what. But when there's an NAACP meeting, I somehow get well." So, you know, you, you have to do something. You just, you just can't sit there and watch television. Sunday's football game. Sundays for us were spent at NAACP mass meetings. You, I mean, that doesn't mean you don't go to a football game, but you have to challenge yourself to do more.
I think it's, it's worthwhile just sort of, it sounds to me that it's hard not to want to do more when you can see the victories and see what the sacrifices the people got just to get these victories. That many of us are still fighting for.
Exactly.
Right now.
Exactly.
So, um, was that Mississippi?
That was Mississippi.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep track, trying to keep the timeline straight.
Okay. Following Mississippi, um, well, I'd lived in Memphis, but worked in Mississippi.
Okay.
Louisiana, Alabama, all the southeastern states. But I, I then was sent to, um, to Alabama. And what, what happened in Alabama, I talked about this just a bit a few minutes ago. But what happened in Alabama was the NAACP had banned, been banned there. And when, when the courts, the Supreme Court ruled that we could go back. I was one of the students along with my friend Edna, who went to Mississippi, uh, to Alabama to organize. And of course, we did that. And, and, and the good thing about Alabama, there had been enough organizational work done prior to our arrival. That it was a little easier than Mississippi. I, I think it was.
Sure.
There's some people who might say, "Well, all of it was tough."
None of it's easy. In that same breath.
But we, we, we were very successful there in terms of the registration. We, we had, um, well, let me go back for just a minute and talk about, um, the, the fact that the NAACP was banned and why.
Okay.
The, the organization was, of course, at that time, the only one that was working in Mississippi. And so the governor did not want teachers, black teachers, to be members of the NAACP. And so he decided to ban the organization. Now, show you the connections. The way it happened was Ruby Hurley, who was the NAACP's regional director for the southeast region. Was in her office working. And a black person, I'll just leave the gender out of it. So the governor will never know. Who knew? But, uh, um, the black person was in the governor's office, just working, cleaning and that kind of thing. And heard the discussion where they were going to go to the NAACP office and take the membership list. That person got on the phone and called Ruby Hurley. Told her what was about to happen. Ruby Hurley and W.C. Patton, who was our registration director, got in the car and took a back road out of Alabama. And went straight to Atlanta with the NAACP's membership list. Now, if they had gotten, if the governor had gotten the list, those persons would have certainly have been fired. But of course, they knew the importance of, of being members of the great organization. And so when, when that happened, of course, governors, people got to the NAACP office. And they, Ruby Hurley and W.C. Patton were gone with the list. No one was in the office, no list was in the office or nothing. So of course, we had to go to court and fight this all the way to the Supreme Court. Well, Edna and I, and, um, at that time, the person who was our political person was Mr. Patton. And Althea Simmons was a, a NAACP organizer. And Mr. Patton was living in Alabama. So Althea and I, and of course, Edna, um, decided to just organize in Alabama. And so that's how we were involved with the demonstrations that took place from Selma to Montgomery. And there were so many others that, smaller demonstrations in other towns that was taking place. So we were a part of that effort. But had Ruby Hurley not had that connection with the black community.
Right.
She never would have known and would have been right there when, when the governor's people came.
Yeah.
To take that list. So people did what they could in their own way, uh, to make things better.
Absolutely.
They knew the importance. And teachers, you know, continued to join, although they were in Alabama. And Ruby Hurley was in Atlanta, Georgia. They got their memberships sent out through Mr. Patton, who was still living there, um, to the NAACP.
Wow, yeah, that's a harrowing tale.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the risk of just like making the call, the, all the membership could have been gone for all of Alabama.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Jobs, if, if they could starve you to death.
For sure. And keep you from getting hired anywhere else.
That's it.
Yeah, it's major. So what brings you to Greensboro?
Well, um, I was in my senior year of college. And Edna was the talkative one. We were just in demonstrations together in Savannah. And she was, we were at a luncheon, I think it was an NAACP convention. And she began talking with the people at the table, who happened to have been white. And they, they talked about, um, the fact that they heard the NAACP was going to hire some people. And would she be interested? And so she said, "Well, I'm still in school. Carolyn's about to graduate, so let me have you talk with her." And so she introduced us. They introduced me to the NAACP. And then they asked Edna, "Well, you think she would go to, to, um, work for the NAACP?" And Edna said, "I don't know about that." You know? And when they spoke to me, I said, "Well, I won't go by myself. I'll go if Edna goes." So here she is, a year from graduating. And I don't know what her mother, uh, what her grandmother said, she was living with her grandmother. But she knew she had, she could only be gone for a year. So we both went to Birmingham and began our work there. And after a year, she came back to school. And then she got married. And so we never worked together again in Alabama as, as, as a team.
Sure.
But we were just a wonderful team. And right now, we're still the best of friends. We call each other room. We'll call, call each other, we talk just about weekly. So, you know, it, it was a good experience. And, and sometimes we, we'll try to remind each other of some things that we wanted to forget. But most of the time, we laugh about stuff now. It's wonderful how time can make a difference.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And so what brings you to Greensboro?
Oh, to Greensboro, you know, get, get the thing in there. So, um, after Edna went back to school and I stayed in Alabama for another two years, I believe. The NAACP, I was, I was, we were called task force workers. And so I stayed in, in Alabama and Mississippi, just working around as needed. And then the NAACP decided it would hire full-time youth workers. And so I was one of those. We'd always had one national director. But I was one of those, um, three that were hired as, as just field directors.
Okay.
And so they sent me, at that time, to, um, to Memphis, Tennessee. And from Memphis, they sent me back to Alabama, I mean, to, to North Carolina.
Okay.
And of course, I've been here ever since. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm a person that must seek trouble. Because when I came here, I was here two weeks and the Klan and Noxie had their shootout. It was another couple of years later when, when, um, we decided to, uh, to, to, um, do demonstrations across the state. Organizing for registration. And, and just happened to, um, organize our youth units. And of course, they had demonstrations across the strait, the state. So it seems like everywhere I went, either a demonstration took place or I was, I had just finished one. So, um, so of course, I, I, um, just became involved in demonstrations as a result of, um, the need to, to do something. And protesting the killing of the Klan and Noxie. And of course, we, we've, we've had demonstrations against everything.
Yeah.
And, and, um, that was just one that continued for quite some time.
Yeah, that's, that's one that continued for quite a while.
And so I, I, um, actually, I reflect on the, the time when the vice principal told us that, um, we'd never get in college. Never get out.
Never get a job.
All of that, wouldn't, wouldn't get a job. And I, and I, I had an opportunity, just lying in the bed this morning. And a friend called me and said, "The governor wants to talk to you." And I said, "About what?" He said, "You just come and talk to him." Well, Jim Hunt was, was, um, had been governor.
Right.
And so they were still calling him governor.
Gotcha.
And Ben Ruffin, who's now deceased, called me back and he said, "You have to talk to the governor." Well, I was okay where I was, I was comfortable. And, and liked North Carolina. And I said, "Okay." He was such a jewel. He called me back and he said, "I'm coming to see you." So I said, "Okay." I still didn't know what, what is going on. And he came to my office and he said, "I'm going to run for office again. And I've got all my staff but one." He said, "I need you to come and join me."
Wow.
I, but I did, I didn't know whether to take that job because what I said to him was, "Suppose you don't win? What would I do then?"
Right.
And of course, he said, "Don't worry about that, I got that taken care of." And came on and, and began to work for the governor. Well, one of the governor's staff says, um, that if there was a demonstration, I couldn't pass it up. So I'm just kind of jumping around there, not talking about that experience of working for the governor. But, um, the, the, um, the fact that the employees in Memphis. And there was just a, a new K-Mot store, K-Mot plant, a warehouse, I think it was, not a plant. Was opening here. And they were paying the employees in Greensboro less than they were paying employees in Atlanta. And their, their excuse was, "Well, Atlanta's a larger city, so it costs more to live there." Well, the ministers here decided to demonstrate against the K-Mot plant. And so that Sunday morning, um, woman who was a congresswoman now, Congresswoman Adams. And I were in church, we're in, we're in the same church. And afterwards, um, well, before we ended the service, my pastor said, "I want you all to pray for me. Now I'm going to demonstrate with some K-Mot workers." He said, "I don't want you to come out, just, just, just pray for me." And so I said to Adams, I said, "Why don't we go out there?" She said, "No," she taught at, been at college. She said, "I have papers to grade." And so I said, "Well, you'll have, you'll, you'll be out, you'll have time to grade." So we went on out to K-Mot. The police told us, "Anyone that crosses this line, step off the sidewalk, you will be arrested." I said, "Adams, let's do it." And so she said, "Okay." And we just went right behind the ministers, stepped off the sidewalk, and we were arrested. We didn't know how we were going to get out of jail.
Right.
No one knew we were going.
Wow.
Except the ministers who were out there with us.
Right.
So she said, "You know, you must be crazy. What, what are we going to do now?" I said, "Well, whoever gets the ministers out will get us out." And so we were arrested there. It was, it was kind of funny because following the arrest, when we got downtown, no, before we got downtown. Adams had never been arrested. And so she, she had her handcuffs on, she just, like she could take them off that way.
Right.
And I said, "No, the more you move them, the tighter they will get."
Right.
So we got down to the jail and, um, they, you know, interviewing us, names, addresses and so forth. And I thought, "My God, now I'm not with the NAACP, I'm working for the governor."
Right.
Well, he wasn't the governor, but will be the governor again. And so when he said, "What's your name?" I said, "Carol Ann Coleman." Like that whisper was going to take it away.
Right.
And of course, um, we were, we were charged and, and, and placed in the cells. And, and of course, um, the, the lawyers that came to get the ministers out, got us out. And I, I really didn't think about, "Well, I could lose my job. This man is running for political office."
Right.
This, this is a state that is not the most desegregated state.
Right.
And so, you know, I said, "I, I just didn't know how that was going to work." But, um, we had a talk that Monday morning. And, um, um, we both knew what we had to do. And so he said, "Okay, just do your work, don't do this again, please." And so I managed to stay there in the governor's office and work for him for, um, nine years, really. So that, that was, that was primarily Memphis. When, when we, um, when we left, when I left that job after his serve, having served eight years. I was talking with Katie Dorsett, who had been a, um, a, a county commissioner. And her husband had taken her place. And what she was saying one day, "Well, Warren thinks he's, he's going to step down, he's not going to run again." And I said, "Oh, I wouldn't mind running." Well, this was, you know, just before we were leaving office. So I came home, talked to Warren and decided I would run. And so that's, that's how I, I got to Memphis and I've stayed in Memphis since nineteen seventy-nine.
And that's, you mean Greensboro?
Greensboro.
Yeah.
Now, you know, talk, I stayed in Greensboro for seven, for, since nineteen seventy-nine.
Yes, you said Memphis just now.
I know, I know. And, and you know, when you start talking, you have to remember, "Where did this happen?"
Yeah.
And, and you will find that to be true in your work. This, this happened, but where? When? You know?
No, I understand.
Yeah.
And what were you doing for the? And what were you doing for the governor's office?
I was special assistant to the governor. And my job was to do several things. First of all, to work with the African-American community primarily. Um, I also, um, had an opportunity to work with other counties or cities where the governor worked. I traveled with him. Um, and um, also just did whatever needed to be done in the governor's office. I was one of five people, four whites, and I was the only black, uh, that met with him every morning. So I never could be late. And that's why I sometimes am late.
You weren't late today.
Yeah. Uh, so, um, um, primarily serving the African-American community. But primarily just carrying the governor's message to that community. And, and serving as their liaison to the governor. Cause you know, you can't always meet with the governor.
Right.
But fortunately, he told people, "When you talk to Carolyn, you've talked to me." And so that was a good thing.
Yeah.
They felt confident in getting their message to the governor. And I felt very comfortable in returning his answer to them.
Okay.
And, and he, he's one of the best governors I've ever met. And I, I've met a few.
Yeah.
And uh, he just was, was the same person, no matter whether he was in a staff meeting or one-on-one. I mean, just a genuine good man.
Absolutely. And so the, in the, in the decision to like become a county commissioner, why did you go for that office as opposed to like city council or something else?
I wouldn't tell the city council that, but um, you know, it happened to be what was available at the time.
Sure. Okay.
I didn't, I didn't choose one over the other.
Okay.
City council was elected every two years, county commissioner every four. And um, so I, the persons that were on the city council, I couldn't beat them. So this was, this was the vacant position with, with Warren Dorsett leaving. So that, that's why I chose that. But I, I think I would've liked either one. And, and the reason why is that if you've ever been a person who was campaigning to win anything, you soon learn that, um, you, you go for what you think you can win at that time. And um, and you, and you go for what is perhaps so much like what you were doing on your other job. And that, that was it because I'd worked with, we had some storms and, and, um, floods and whatever. And the counties usually were responsible for dealing with that across the state. So I'd already worked with some of that, um, just helping African-Americans get settled in homes and that kinda thing. Went, once, cause you know, the water usually came to our side of town simply because of the low laying of the land.
Sure. Yeah.
Um, so I'd, I'd had some experience in working with that. And of course, with the people, I could've worked with either group. But um, much of what the county does, um, I did for the governor.
And so what do you remember about your first campaign that you're running for yourself as opposed to like assisting in other campaigns as like a community organizer?
Basically, um, once you know people and once you've, you've already worked with them, it's easier if they know you and know what you're capable and know of doing. And know that if you say it, you're gonna do it. That I, I think that, that was the key for me. Now, of course, um, you, you, you have to get out into the community. Talk to people. And much of what I did with the NAACP was the same thing that I did for the governor. Now, people said, "Well, how, how could you do that?" Well, it was because he was such a good man that he wanted to do what was right. It reminds me a lot of President Biden now. Um, you know, because there wasn't very much difference in what I did then and what, what I'm doing now. The good thing about what I did then and, and um, and, and what I'm doing now is I'm able to get people in, help get people in jobs, making them aware of what's available in county government. You only need to apply. You might get it, you might not. But you can't get it if you don't apply.
Right.
And so I, I think all of that was the same job. Just, it's just that when I worked, uh, well, both positions really, whether it was for the governor or whether it's the county, um, I could make things happen. Now, as long as I was the volunteer in the community, I could push things and make them happen too. So everywhere that I've ever worked, I've been able to make a difference. And, and that makes a difference. I, I know so many people that don't like what they do for a job.
For sure.
I, I like, I love it, you know?
Um, what do you remember about first being on, being, becoming a member of the county, becoming a county commissioner?
Um, I scared to death. Although I'd, I'd worked at another level with the governor. People, people really want you to do what they want you to do. And so one person is telling you on this side, "You need to do so-and-so and so to make this happen." And someone else on the other side is unhappy with what you're trying to do to help this person achieve his or her goals. So just, can you, can you maintain if, if you don't do the right thing?
Right.
You know? Um, and you're never gonna solve everybody's problems.
Right.
But um, your problems need to be intact with the community's problems.
Right.
And so what you do, you try to please the community, cause you can't please everyone.
Right. Um, how did your relationship with the community change at all when you're in this local position of power? Or did it not?
It didn't change very much. I mean, that's unbelievable, but it didn't change very much. Because um, you know, now it's perhaps, um, just as challenging to, to get things. I mean, black people are still getting killed by the police.
Right.
Black people still aren't getting the better jobs. Um, and it's always a challenge. Now, just this morning, I serve on the transportation board here. And um, I had a meeting with that board. What happened is that, um, maybe two years ago, we had an African-American black, well, let me start over there.
Okay.
We had an African-American woman who was serving as a staff person for that organization. And um, she, well, her, she and, and her fellow employees had a, um, a Halloween party. And at that Halloween party, one of the whites had a noose around his neck as his dress. And um, when she reported it and talked about how offended she was by that, the, the supervisor didn't think much of it. He, it didn't bother him at all. Now, of course, he was white.
Sure.
So one of the other board members and I, after talking with the woman, went and talked with the supervisor. He, he just didn't, didn't seem concerned at all. So we talked with the full board. Were able to get, well, she, she resigned. And we were able to get severance paid for her as a result of her resignation. And to get some training for the entire staff regarding racism and so forth.
Right.
Um, never bothered even think about that again. Well, this, this, this last month or so, um, two women were fired from the same plant. And it seems like they could have, easily have been just reprimanded for what they did. What happened is one woman who was new, uh, came to work at the, the transportation group. And um, she asked the other woman about how she liked it. And she said, "Well, I don't like it." She said, "I don't know if you're making the right decision to come here." That woman went back and told the supervisor. So they fired her.
Wow.
Said she spoke despairingly about the company.
Right.
Well, who doesn't? I, I mean, every now and then, some company's gonna do something that you don't like.
Right.
So when, when this employee told my city council coworker that, um, this had happened, she spoke to me about it and she said, "Since both of us serve on the board, let's go and, and talk to him." Now, he claimed he didn't even know what a noose was, but anyway, in this day and age.
Right.
So in speaking to him, he, he basically did nothing. So this morning, we asked the chairman of the board to call a meeting, well, to, to have us meet in closed session with that board. Do you know that when we started talking with them, the lawyer says, "Well", um, this is the lawyer for the board who's at every meeting. He says, "Well, you can't talk about the employees, uh, like this." So we said, "No, we don't expect to talk about the employees. We wanna talk about the, the manager." And so they said, "Well, we're going to close session." Went into closed session. And um, as we started talking, the lawyer said, "Well, no, you can't talk about the employees. Now, you can talk about the manager, but you can't talk about the employees." He said, "But you have to vote on it. The board may not wanna vote, may not wanna talk about it." So they took a roll call vote. There were sixteen men and three women, including the two of us who spoke to them.
Right.
And what had happened is they had already met about it. We didn't know this. And um, he would not talk with us. And the issue was that when we were talking with him about the women, he says, um, "Well, I'm not gonna talk about that noose again. I knew one of you would bring it up. And so I'm not gonna talk about it." And he hung up the phone in our faces, just like that. Now, we're board members.
Right.
I have never been on the board where a staff person hung up the phone on me.
Right.
They would not talk. They voted sixteen men and the one woman voted against the two black women. And there were two black men on the board even that voted against talking with us. I said, "Racism never stops." I mean, you won't even talk to your fellow board members about an issue like that? That's unbelievable. So I'm hot today.
You wanted to put that all on the racket.
Yeah, yeah. It's not over. You know, it's just, and, 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 and some people think, "Oh, the higher you go in a job, you know, the more authority you have."
Right.
Well, the higher you go, you can get on the board.
Yeah.
You don't have any authority.
Right.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah. It absolutely is.
Yeah. You subjected to it no matter what.
No, it's always there.
Mm-hmm. And then sub-African-Americans, don't want them to think that they're not just like them. So they vote against you too.
Right.
You know?
Which is not their best interest.
No. I mean, I, I can't believe that African-American men voted with the white men to not even hear what we had to say.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah. When, trying to think of how to go to the next question then, though.
What's a, a rope, a loop in there?
Right. When, what are you, what do you think are important qualities for, for political leadership?
I, I would say first of all, you have to love people. You, you have to enjoy being around people and um, know that, um, if you're in a position where you can help folk, that's, that, that should be your priority. And, and that's always been mine. Because there are so many people that don't know what to do, when to do it, how to do it. And it's just natural for me. I mean, I'm no lawyer or anything, but I know how to navigate through the system.
Right.
And that, that's, that's really important. I, I think too, um, you have to know how to work with other people. Now, for me, first and foremost, is civil rights. I, I, I just, I can't deal with sitting there just letting it pass. Um, so for, for me, I, I, I want to work in the area of civil rights and make a difference for people. Now, the one thing I didn't say about my job with the governor, among other things, was I was the person who was expected to help him find African-Americans to work in top positions. And so sixty-five, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars were the salaries I brought people in for. If you can make that difference, do it.
Yeah.
Don't, I mean, don't be afraid because someone else will get the job if you don't.
Right.
You know? And, and uh, sometimes, you know, and I think this happens with Democrats too often. We think, "Okay, we, we've done enough now. Let's kinda slow down." You know? You can't slow down. I, I, I like a, a verse in the Bible that talks about work while it's day. Because when, when the night comes, no man can work.
Right.
And so that's what you have to do. I, I always met with that group of senior African-Americans after they came on. I didn't leave them out there to just work on their own.
Right.
So I met with them once a month. We talked about what we could do to make it better for our people. And leave some there in the jobs when we leave. You, you need to be a mentor as much as you can. I'm so proud, the, the present governor's, uh, chief of staff worked in my office. I mean, so that means that I brought not only she but several others along so that when I was gone, right now, I can call down to Raleigh and get some things. Can't get everything, but I can get some things done.
Sure.
And that, so, so I, I think that's, that's real important.
What do you think you've learned campaigning for, campaigning in Greensboro specifically?
Well, Greensboro's a good place to work, um, just in general. But I, I think you've got an activist community here that, um, some of them, there's some, some older ones and there's some younger ones. And while the, the younger ones will probably say, "Oh, the older ones won't ever leave." But we, we'll go soon. And, and I, I think that more than anything, you can get community support. Ministers, the Popeet Forum is very active in this community. The young people are very active. And of course, those who've been around for a while are still very active. So you learn all of that. That, um, you, you've got to bring some others along. But that cross-section, you know, I think about churches. There are some churches where, in Greensboro, there's probably not a person in the church that's over thirty years old. And then there's some that are older. I mean, that cross-section just makes for a beautiful church, I think. And that's, that's true with an organization. Because someone has lived through this that, that we're living through. And then there'll be someone to follow us.
Absolutely. Um, what do you think you've learned in comparing your first campaign as a commissioner to? What do you think you've learned in comparing your first campaign as a commissioner to your most recent campaign?
Well, I think, well, perhaps what is a shocker to most people is that you've got to raise some money.
Yeah.
You know? You can do the organizing, all of that, but you got to buy signs. You've got to buy bumper stickers. You've got to have some radio or television ads, depending on the level. And then you just have to know people. Now, you may not know the names, but you know, you do the, "Hey, girl," that kind of thing.
Sure, sure.
And always speaking to people.
Absolutely.
In our community, that's important. One of the first things folk was, "She didn't speak to me," you know, that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
So it's important for you, just speak to everybody and so you won't miss anyone. Now, you say, "Well, why is that so important?" I don't know, but it makes a difference for us.
It does.
And I think it goes back to the days when, I think in my own personal life, when I was in school and walking from school, the buses to the, well, walking to get off the school bus on home, there were older people sitting on the front porches. And you just walk down the street, "Hey, Ms. Jones, hey, Ms. Brown," you know? You spoke to everybody. People don't do that as much now, but I love it, you know? They don't know your name sometimes, but they know, "Oh, you know the lady that so and so and so," that kind of thing. So young people will especially passionate, not open their mouth. And I just speak to them. And they'll speak back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
When you're, do you, I think we're nearing toward the end of the interview. Is there anything you wish I had asked that I had not gotten to yet?
You know, not necessarily, but I'll say this.
Okay.
It is very important for adults to work with their children, encouraging them when they're young, whatever it is that they want to do. Encourage them, it's positive to do it. I can remember that I would awaken some mornings to go to school. And my dad would have, we had some civil rights songs being sung by different groups. He'd have those songs on, just singing along. He's cooking breakfast and singing along. And it was just good to know that my parents supported me in everything that I did.
Right.
Because some young people don't get that support.
Right.
So I would say to parents, it might not sound like what you want it to sound like.
Right.
But it's just good when your parents sit and talk to you about doing well in school and, you know? I think everybody hears that. "Oh, you better do good in school because, you know, that will determine how much you'll earn and all of that stuff." You say, "Oh, God." At schools where they have speakers, you know, people say that too, graduation, whatever. But it makes such a difference. You can look back on your life and when your parents have encouraged you, especially if it's your daddy, well, I guess depending on the child.
Sure.
But when parents have encouraged you to do things that sometimes they weren't able to do, couldn't afford to do it.
Right.
And, but they're saying to you, "Now, if you do well in school, you'll be able to do this," that kind of thing. I think that makes a difference. Also, I'm a Christian, so I'd say this, although some young people won't listen to what I'm saying. But the thing is, I learned how to do public speaking. I couldn't sing, but I was in the choir. I mean, if you are active in something, whether it's church, whether it's an organization, I always encourage young people to join the NAACP. Their primary, I guess, interest for young people is teaching them how to be leaders. And if you can do that, I think that makes a difference too. That you've just got to learn how to work with people, how to bring other people along, and how to encourage them. If you could do those things, I think that would be great.
Okay, so we'll hit our wrap-up questions and then we'll finish up. Do you think you, can you, do you have any favorite accomplishments as a county commissioner?
Yeah, just this year, we were able to get a CARES grant from the federal government. And our government, in fact, we're primarily Democrats. But our government was able to put a half million dollars into a food distribution program. And I directed that program. We had churches, the YMCA, other nonprofit groups, the Deltas, several groups that helped distribute food. And so we were able to feed people in the midst of this pandemic. And that just, for me, that's just great. Because it bothers me when I hear that this many kids went to bed hungry tonight, last night, or whatever. So if I were to say, what I really liked more than anything was the fact that we were able to feed people. Now, I'm a civil rights advocate. So right at the top of that list is the fact that we have a minority women business enterprise program where we're able to bring in black contractors to get more contracts. I hate to have to say to kids, "You're on the free lunch program," you know? I want their dads and moms to be working so that they can have their kids feel like they are somebody.
Right, absolutely.
So just working with those two programs. We're doing a disparity study right now in our MWBE program. And should have it in the next couple of months or so. That's going to mean that African American contractors and other businesses will be able to get more contracts from us because we'll be able to keep a better record of how it's done, what's done, and that kind of thing.
And so, as you know, this project is primarily about commemorating the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote, but as you know, it didn't give all women the right to vote. But it did, when you're thinking back on the 19th Amendment, well, let me just start with this. Do you remember your first vote?
Yes.
Well, how did it go?
It was great. Now, Georgia, although we're deep south, you could vote in Georgia at age 18. So that was the same year that I cast my first vote, was the same year that John F. Kennedy was elected president. And so, I mean, everybody was excited.
Right.
Because he was a young man and just one that we admired so much that was elected. So I was really excited by that.
Do you remember learning about, do you remember talking about politics with your mother? I know she, you went on those, that came up before?
Yes, yes. Now, of course, one thing, my mother owned a dry cleaners. And so anytime there was a campaign, she always had a little jar to raise some money for someone. Because you always need that money.
Right.
So just talking with her about the importance of that. And she raised money for the NAACP. So you could help, even though they're focused, "Oh, I don't bother with that." Some churches didn't bother with politics. But the thing is, you could say to them, "Well, why don't you give a dollar?" You know, do something. And so she did a lot of that.
That real beginning of the local organizing and fundraising, really. Do you remember learning about women's history?
Not as much. I was very much involved with organizing across the country for the NAACP, the youth vote. And that was more my contribution. Especially at the time when I was 18, knowing that there were young people who were 18 also, but still couldn't vote. And it wasn't just Mississippi. So I think, for me, that was it more than anything.
More than women specifically.
Now, since living in Memphis, in Greensboro,
Sure.
I have had an opportunity to work with, been at college a bit. And so they always have a commemoration and celebrating that vote. And I've been able to be on some of the programs as a speaker, something of that nature. So that's primarily been my work with the Women's Vote.
All right, I think that's all of my questions.
Well, let me just say this too, I just thought about this.
Okay.
It is tough being a woman, trying to do anything where men are involved. It's just like this morning, as indicated, that meeting. 16 men voted no for us in working with, trying to make life better for this woman who lost her job. And I think that I've had three brothers. And that has made me as tough as nails sometimes. Because I say to folk, I used to have to fight to keep the meat on my plate. I mean, my mom would be at work and when we'd get home from school, she'd call to say that we were at home. And my brother would call me to the phone, get to the phone, and nobody's on the phone. And I'd get back to my plate, the meat's gone. So I can tell you that it is tough. You don't get anything just because you're a woman. And so I say to women, "Toughen up," you know? We can't just sit back and expect the men to always take the leadership role.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.